Yep, so the first one up, we'll go with Steve Anderson.
You have to walk up.
And we have to get the lopes. This is for you, Steve, for 10 years of dedicated service and a joy and a privilege to work with you and to see how you've grown and developed, and you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
Are you smiling? You're not what's smiling?
Elbow bump.
Elbow bump, huh? I got this thing. Randy? Come on up. I'm amazed. One in years.
Years.
That's a long time. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Sue Leifer. Fifteen years.
We need the song "He Rose" to be playing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Carol Brock. Big fifteen years. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
How can you leave now after fifteen years? You're just getting trained, right?
Well, we like to, we're nip and tuck here. We'll wait. Okay? We can wait, we are in no rush. Life's too short to hurry through it. A spouse. So she's calling him, I can tell. Where are you? Oh, there we go.
Because of the circumstances, we weren't able to really officially give this presentation to our new corporal in the jail, Deputy Fressett, who's now the new medical, jail medical deputy. So, I have a presentation, certificate of promotion. This is to certify that Matthew Fressett is duly promoted to jail medical deputy with the rank of corporal for Valley County Sheriff's Office on the 20th day of April in the year of our Lord 2020. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. Thank you for coming and supporting each other.
Thank you for all your hard work and service.
Oh, we forgot you. No, we got you, son. He's still on 14?
Is that true?
No.
Okay.
We did have a period of time though. But I keep a big HR record before me or whatever. For some reason, he prepared some and passed it out.
Yeah, that's right, I remember that.
And when I came on, I had to, you know, draw a line somewhere. So I drew it, I don't know, the first of them here or something. And so anybody that had read, now I can give this off, anybody that had reached a milestone prior to that, they didn't get it. So I have had a few, I have to draw a line somewhere. It's what it is.
That is true. Oh, I can't wait till we're through this time, super silliest time. So over. If, if I never have to hear the word COVID-19 again, any call, any training, any anything, I would be one happy camper.
And it's like, I don't want to listen to the news, but it's all about.
Yes, ma'am. I don't want to listen to anything. I mean, we haven't had a NACO meeting that isn't totally around COVID-19 forever, or IAC, or Governor Little's meetings, or anything.
All I do listen to is AARP. Well, yeah, it does have, you can do it through online, listen to it on the radio or the phone. Let's say AARP, town hall meetings that he does, and they're all on the phone. Cause I just want to know what he's thinking before we get to that next step, yeah.
Have you guys ever heard of the Drudge Report? Something you have to get on your phone? That, to me, is probably the most accurate. I like it, some people don't like it. CNN and Fox and all those are way off. This guy's kind of. All right, Doug, we're going into general, general?
Yes. A few minutes that we have or begin.
We had something we all wanted to ask Gabby, didn't we?
Yeah, if I can just give you guys a brief.
What was that?
As you're fully aware, during budget sessions, multiple people are involved, and multiple people in my office are involved. So, we don't always have the same recollection of why certain things were done away. So I asked Gabby to come up and kind of, if she could recollect why we put the shift differential wages in 0118 general fund. These are the wages, there's a differential for night employees, for the sheriff deputies, the detention deputies, and dispatchers. There also was a shift differential for the juvenile detention employees when the juvenile detention center was open. So with that said, I apologize that I didn't have the correct answers initially. But I brought in my chief deputy, Gabby Knapp, Gabrielle Knapp, to provide you with what her beliefs are regarding why this was done. So with that, I'll turn it over to her.
And I wasn't actually, I don't think, chief deputy at the time, so I can only speculate by doing payroll as to why they do it. So, because they had juvenile detention people at one time, I think they decided to do it all as one line instead of doing four, a lot of it, yeah, four different departments. They decided to do it 0118, because what I do, I just take it out of the regular line for whatever department they work out of, and then I do a JDE at the end of the quarter to do the four months' worth of how much for jail, dispatch, and sheriff.
So this is a bucket, and you're moving all of it out anyway into the appropriate budget?
Into the appropriate, to pay, I take it out of the shift differential back into where the wages got, came out of. And they did the same thing with the juvenile detention center while it was still open.
Is that more difficult, having to do that versus just coding it?
No, just decoding the numbers different. So I don't think that, yeah, changing it would be a problem if you wanted one in each of them. But it would still, I don't know how easy it would have been to just make it come directly out of there right away. I assume that would be possible, I don't know why it wasn't set up that way.
So then what we do is move those funds from this A budget into that A budget, well, this is a B budget. Into their A budget?
Is it in an A budget in 0118?
Off the look.
No, no.
B budget?
No, it's in the B budget.
So, yeah, I mean, because technically it should be an A budget line. Can you have an A in 0118? Cause it isn't, or do we have an A?
Because we have vacation compensation.
I'm surprised it wasn't paid out of an A budget. It definitely should be out of A.
I think something we maybe want to consider moving that into A budget for sheriff.
Having one under 010420.
Gabby, why we got you here, we talked about a paytime off policy this morning, and there's concern about sick and vacation and all this stuff, and I want to know your feelings on it. I know the PTO probably would have made it easier for you as far as payroll, but people are concerned about, there's too much time off now. Some people that have been here 15 years can take up to a month or six weeks off or whatever. I don't remember the number exactly. Something they have rubbed, do you care one way or the other as far as payroll is concerned?
I like the PTO as far as payroll is concerned, it's a little bit simpler. It would be one deduction, just to count, you know, versus two deductions for some employee each month. So it'd be a little bit faster, but, and then, but I mean, those who have been here a long time, they are still going to have the sick bank. So, it's not a big deal payroll-wise, really, either way.
Either way, okay.
So five years from now, when sick bank has gone away?
Then it would be a little bit simpler. We just have to start somewhere and move forward for the future, unless we're going to do this forever. I'm going to make all the employees hate me.
Yeah, well, I'm, no, not yet, but I'm just concerned about, you know, the 65% payout versus 50% payout. I mean, this, I'm not sure, I don't know how, we got to think about it. Now, I like it because it helps you out, but if you're saying it's not that big of a deal, then maybe we're shoveling something that we don't need to shovel.
I think it's a nice benefit, personally, not, you know, I think it's a nice benefit for those who don't take a lot of sick time.
That's what I like.
They still get just as much time off, you know.
It rewards those that aren't sick a lot, you know? It negates the people that automatically, every single month, take that, you know, the sick time that are not compiling it, but.
Well, maybe that's what we need to do, is figure out a way that you've got to take one or the other by the end of the year, so we don't carry that stuff to where it gets paid. I don't know.
We can't force people to take sick time.
No, you can't.
So.
And how do you control someone who's sick that just takes paytime off? Keeps yourself.
I think we put it back on the agenda and have further discussions on it.
Keep chewing on it.
Yeah.
So let's move on down.
Okay.
Thank you for your help.
Where we left off was professional services auditing. This is the cost for our outside auditor to come and perform our outside audit. I spoke with Zweigard and Associates last week, and they are going to be providing us with an agreement again. They indicated that the cost would not be increasing. So if we do, in fact, decide to go with Zweigard and Associates, the cost for our outside audit will be $18,300.
So we'll leave that one.
Okay. Membership dues, these are all the dues that the county pays, and I have reached out to Idaho Association of Counties. They have not sent out the dues yet. We usually get a letter from them identifying if there's an increase to the dues. They indicated that they don't believe that there's going to be an increase, and they, we're going to get the letters to us by today. I just checked my email before coming down here. I don't have the dues notice from IAC, so we can tentatively write in the $17,134, but it's possible that that will change once I get the information from Idaho Association of Counties.
So is this only IAC? This is not anybody else's dues and memberships?
This is only the IAC dues. Yes, ma'am.
And the way they do that, Doug, you correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it by department?
Well, they, we budget separately for those dues, like probation, clerks and associates. The clerks, we pay for those dues out of my budget. This is like county-wide dues. Civil Defense Fund comes out of here.
So this, there's more money in dues than just the 17 grand, I guess is what I'm saying.
There are, but we budget for that within each individual department.
Cause I know Carol has some dues for state, prosecuting attorneys, and Cindy has dues for the planning association.
Budgeted for those out of each individual department.
So it looks like IAC has kind of gone up and down. It was $11,005, then 19, and then 17.
Correct.
And they have other counties that don't join, and they quit them because they can't afford it or whatever for a year, and so they they shove those fees back on the other counties.
So we just put per invoice?
Yeah, well, once we get the notification from IAC, we'll be able to provide you with an accurate figure for that. Benefit Managers, this is the organization that handles the reviewing of the benefit program that we have. There is a fee associated with that costs for those individuals that participate in the, that, I apologize not knowing the terminology, we need to have an additional funding takeout of your check to cover your deductible. They do the transactions for us.
They manage that money?
Correct.
Their health savings account?
Correct, excuse me, the health savings account.
Listen, there's something, there's something else to it, but it's a pretty nominal fee.
A thousand is.
A thousand is appropriate, yes, ma'am. Postage, well, this year we've unfortunately had to do a significant more with postage for the election, but we are getting reimbursed through the Secretary of State's office. So I do feel that $50,000 is appropriate for postage. It doesn't reflect the accurate expenses that we've made so far, but we've had to add additional postage recently for the cost of the absentee ballot, as well as the return of those ballots. But again, those costs will be reimbursed by the Secretary of State's office. But for budgeting purpose for next year, I do think that $50,000 is appropriate.
So Doug, as we put people in line and ask them to do things online, will that increase our postage expense? So if they're at the DMV asking for stuff, you know, we're going to have to send it out, right?
Yeah, but those fees are, I'd have to ask June, Assessor Former, about that, but I believe that those are incorporated in their cost, the registration fees. And we do receive that as revenue for postage. But I believe that it's, it's provided on the invoice that they provided to pay their online registrations.
Okay, perfect.
But we can get clarification from her.
I think it's a buck more of a license, and then you take the postage out of that or something.
And I would hope that eventually, you know, like the treasurer's office, as people start paying online, we don't have to send everything out, dual notices and all that kind of stuff.
I'd have to look at code, and I, we'd have to talk with the treasurer as well as the assessor. I think per code, you still have to provide those in paper form, the valuations, as well as the property taxes. But I don't know. That would be a discussion for the assessor as well as the treasurer regarding that. But the next fee is the outsourcing cost for doing all of those mailings for Valley County. We, I think we went to that in 2017, I believe, is when we first began outsourcing those. If the commissioners are inclined to continue with that, it has been a good program for the county to have someone, instead of the employees, mail out all of the assessment notices, as well as the tax, tax notices. But if it's something that we don't need to provide via paper, the problem that you get with that, we're always here, is, well, I don't have a computer. So I, I need the paper form, but I don't know if there's a possibility of weeding some of those individuals out that don't have access to a computer to mail those. I don't know, the question I don't.
When I, when I talked to Gabe about that, there are a lot of people that pay their taxes online now.
Yeah.
And so you don't have to send that out.
I just don't know if there's a requirement for that initial notice to be sent out via mail. I don't know what code says.
Yeah, there's an opt-out for getting an electronic copy versus getting a.
I think you have to opt into it to get them all electronic. But it's been really good to outsource that, because they still deal with 27, 24,000 checks in June and December they come in. However, I think last year he said it was down 1,700 or something, because people are paying online. So that's.
So this is just sending the invoice, they're not processing the checks though, right?
No, ma'am.
No, 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 the checks come here.
Yeah, okay.
This is assessment and tax notice.
This is just the assessment.
And one year we had something stuck in it for something too, we added something to it.
Well, if you recall, we had a error on one of the mailings that went out, so we had to have an additional cost for them to mail an additional notice, so there was an additional expense that came out of there.
So the $10,000 still looks like it's appropriate?
Yep. This is, the next expense line is the Soil and Water Conservation District. This is the contribution that Valley County makes to the Valley Soil, Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. They have requested 8,500 again for fiscal year 2021. Commissioner Mopin, all of these contributions are taken, the requests are written in, and then at the end, the commissioners make a, you know, final decision if, in fact, they're going to fully fund the requests that have been made. I think the commissioners have an obligation to fund all of the requirements that, the services that they're required to provide. So, yes, we get significant requests from outside agencies, non-governmental agencies requesting contributions. The commissioners in the past have honored their request, or at least tried to make a notation that the requests are being made, and then of course, the final determination if it would be funded comes down to when we're, you know. Making hard, hard choices, hard decisions. But so, at this point in time, the Soil and Water Conservation District is making a request of 8,500. This is an increase from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 2020, and at this point in time, I believe they're requesting another $8,500.
They had a guy that was running their first service employee that they could use to match that 2,000. He got pulled out of the job, and they came to us and asked for another 2,000 to stay here to be able to function. But we provide a building, we provide the heat, the water, sewer, all that stuff. So this 8,500 is only a part of it. They get, at one time, they were funding a lot of the equip program, which we used on West Mountain to build those roads. So we were getting four or 500,000 back every year. Now, some of those programs have kind of changed. We'll get that, get a funding.
I went to one of their meetings, and there are a lot of grant opportunities out there that they make us aware of too.
And Squaw Creek is just the Emmett side of Valley County, so to speak.
Correct, and they submitted a letter back in February, February 4th of 2020, requesting $950 again.
Did we not pay that this year, Doug?
We usually pay it, we haven't paid it so far, but we will.
$950 again?
That's correct, that's the request as of February 4th. The fire mitigation, this is the grants that are applied for through Stephanie Nelson. And this is the expense line that we use to fund those grants. Typically, what we've done in the past is we've budgeted 350,000. We don't always expend that amount, but on the revenue side, we have a matching $350,000. So this is not costing the taxpayers anything for this, for this, this program. And I would recommend, based on the conversation that I had with Stephanie, to leave that at 350,000.
So that all is out of the Title III?
No, this is separate than Title III. This is strictly the grants that are applied for and received. The Title III funds are paid for to do like the advertising. This expense line is not huge for that. This is, this expense line is actually used for the completion of the projects, or to do the fire mitigation work.
Her salary comes out of this, right? No?
The administrative side, I believe a portion of it does, but some of her hourly costs come out of Title III.
Okay.
The next is contracts for copiers and printers. Based on the prior year's expenses and the current year expenditures, I believe that 49,000 is enough, unless we are going to propose bringing on more printers and copy machines. I don't know if the commissioners have.
We're not going to do that, cause one time this figure was like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
If you recall, each, basically each department had a Xerox machine, which is a significant cost for each department to have a Xerox machine.
And they all complained about it, but it's working out great.
I don't know if it's working out great, I still think that there's some complaints, but I think in the best interest of how we're operating, I think it makes sense to have the machines that we currently have.
So where did the one, so like, building just got a new one?
A new copy machine or a new Xerox machine? That would be expended out of this expense line, unless it's a brand, it's a brand, brand new one.
I know David had one somewhere. It doesn't print the size that they need, nor does it print color, and so we're going to have to swap that one with something. So that's what I'm wondering, is where they got it, or if it's an older machine, or whatever. And is that going to be replicated throughout the building? Did we just order something, to your knowledge?
I don't know. I would console with David on that.
Yeah, David, no, but I, I know that one time everybody had one, and it was so expensive. We decided, let's combine all that, per David's request.
So at this point in time, I think 49,000, we are budgeting accordingly, based on the expenses that we currently have. The next one is grants and contributions. We created this grant line in case there was any other grants, maybe that the commissioners would be applying for, that Mary, that you requested Mary Rosen to apply for. This is, that's not economic development, that's not recreation. We created this grant and contribution line specifically for that. So if, I envision that that is going to still be the direction that the commissioners want to go, so I would recommend that for this expense, 100,000, as well as the revenue side, 100,000, with the understanding that this would not be accessed unless a grant was approved.
I asked her to look for one for the north end of the courthouse, as well as ground purchase. So she's been doing a little bit of that work, but there's anything out there, but.
The next expense line is a contribution line for Treasure Valley Transit. I received a letter from them on April 15th, requesting 40,000 from Valley County to meet the local match requirements for the mountain community transitional operational expenses. And then they're asking for an additional 30,000 to be requested for the continued operation. So based on how I'm reading this, they're requesting $70,000 from Valley County, 40,000 for a match, and then 30,000 to continue with operations.
From Treasure Valley?
From Treasure Valley Transit. I also received a phone call from Terry Lindenberg, who would like to make onsite presentation to the commissioners.
My personal feeling, Doug, is I think 25, but they're asking for 30,000 this year, maybe we could split and go 27,500 or something, but the more you give them, the more they're going to ask for.
They're also indicating that the additional funding request, 10,000 is to assist in meeting the local match requirement of a summer route in the city of Cascade. So it looks like they're also trying to have a city route in Cascade become operational in the future.
Which should be a city funded.
That could be a stance at the commissioners.
Yeah.
So right now.
What is, do you know what McCall contributes to?
I don't, we could always do a public records request and find out the contribution that's made.
I could probably just ask.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, probably between 25,000 and 30,000.
Can we leave this one open until she comes to us and talks?
Absolutely.
That would be the question I would ask her, Dave. How much McCall throws in? Are they still charging a, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Does Donley throw in too?
I don't know. She's still charging a buck fifty a ride?
Depends where you're going. From Cascade to McCall, I think it's $3.
$3, so they've raised their fee.
The next is a contribution to Long Valley Preservation Society. If you are not familiar with the Long Valley Preservation Society, they do the Roseberry Museum. Sounds like you are aware. We, Valley County makes a contribution to them of $2,975. They did, I don't know if it was last year they came and asked for an increase in person. I have not reached out to them, and they have not submitted any type of letter to us requesting.
We came here and took some money out of the nasty funding game.
That was a few years ago, though.
Two, three years ago.
For the foundation of the museum.
It was quite a bit, I think it was 10,000 or 20,000.
They were purchasing that old home or something, weren't they? They were trying to renovate one of the houses that had been moved.
I would anticipate that they will be contacting my office in the very near future, so I would wait on this one as well. The RSVP program is no longer in existence, so this $500 contribution will not be made for next year. It was for a senior program, but this program is no longer available. Cascade Senior Center, again, I have not heard from them, but we, the county has always made a contribution of $8,500 to the Cascade Senior Center, and we can reach out to them to see if they are going to be requesting any more than that.
Well, there, that's a county facility, and Scott just sent us a deal about they're requesting a new air conditioner stand or something.
And that, this, this contribution does not pay for the building.
They're probably going to need more this year. McCall is not a county-owned, senior, in fact, I don't, it's a city-owned, so.
But Valley County does make a contribution, that's the next one of 8,500. The county makes two contributions of 8,500 to both senior centers.
What we did there years ago was, with pause. What we did there years ago was, McPaus was getting thirty thousand, we were giving the seniors fifteen thousand. We decided we should get the dogs and the seniors the same amount. And that's what, that's where the fifteen thousand and the eighty-five fifty came from.
The next one is animal damage control. Now I received a letter from the Animal Damage Control Office, and I think it is inaccurate. They're requesting fifteen hundred dollars, which is a significant reduction than what they've asked for in the past. I do have a call placed into Phil Davis, and he was gonna look into that. But I, I do anticipate that the fifty-five hundred dollars is the accurate amount for the contribution.
I'm not sure, we gotta check into this, but I think the legislature funded them some money this year.
Okay.
What's animal damage control?
That's the wolf and coyote, that kind of stuff. But I think they got a, Phil should know that, but I think they got funded from the state legislature.
So it's possible it will be reduced.
It could be fifteen hundred.
Well, this letter dated March fourth, twenty twenty indicates that they're requesting fifteen hundred dollars, which.
So the legislature was over.
Well, let's grant their requests.
Um, yeah, I think we need to wait on that one. That's pretty important up here, believe it or not.
The next one is the McPaus contribution. We have heard from Amber, who is indicating the executive director of McPaus, Amber Kostoff, that the requested amount for McPaus this year would be fifteen thousand again.
The rub on that one is they just bought those two vet clinics, and I'm not sure they're nonprofit anymore, nonprofit.
Well, if you recall her presentation, she kind of explained that. I don't know if you want to bring her back in, or, this is, you know, strictly for the sheltering of the animals.
I'm not saying I'm forward against it, Doug, I'm just saying.
And I'm not either, I'm just letting you know she did.
I'd like a presentation, because I'd like to know how many animals they're actually taking from Valley County.
Two.
Exactly.
Two last year.
They do have the thrift shop, which provides income to them.
Which is tax free.
And they now have the both vet clinics.
The vet clinics, they can therefore profit those operations, but then they take all their profit and donate it, is what I think they're doing.
So that still keeps them a nonprofit?
McPaus itself is a nonprofit, and I would suspect that's how they set that up. Because you know, remember Big Creek Lodge that came up? And they do that too, they rent out rooms up there, and they tried to come in for that tax reduction, and we said, no, you're a for-profit hotel, but then they take all their profits and they don't pay tax on it because they donate a hundred percent of their profits to their nonprofit organization. So the for-profit organization gets a tax break when they donate. So, so they're getting a tax break because they're donating a hundred percent of the after expenses. But I think McPaus is still probably a nonprofit.
I think really what it comes down to is, I know I talked to you guys earlier about the vet here in Cascade does a lot for the deputies when they have dog car crashes. He goes and gets the dog. And maybe what we need is some data from Sheriff's Department. How many actual dogs are we taking to McPaus versus Cascade Vet? Because I think it would surprise you, those numbers.
Well, I think that if you read the presentation, it wasn't just how many we're taking, it's how many they take in from the citizens.
They're taking dogs from all over, I don't know, not just Valley County.
Those as part of the county's budget to that. But I can send a note to the sheriff if you want.
Well, I thought we saw a report on that, maybe. Yeah, ask, ask her what, what, actually, how many they take. Because and, and how many they send to Cascade Vet too? So we can leave that one for now, Doug, until we dig in a little more?
Okay. Shepherd's Home contribution. We received a letter, as well as I think Mark DeYoung was gonna do a formal presentation prior to the COVID. Sorry for bringing up that word again. But we do have a letter from them requesting ten thousand dollars, that's an increase of five thousand dollars. But they are requesting that because they're attempting to replace the siding on a home, is why they were requesting an additional five thousand dollars. So I don't begin.
They definitely support the youth that are in need in this area. I mean, I would much prefer to give them more than McPaus.
My feeling exactly, I'd rather switch those numbers around and give them the fifteen and give McPaus five, but we gotta wait to see what Carol comes up with. But I think the Shepherd's Home is a wonderful thing, I think that's, that's more our style.
They're always full without risk kids.
So let's set that one at ten? They're full all the time.
We used to use them all the time when there were juvenile issues, and for whatever reason, over the past five years or so, it just has, it's just dropped out when you have foster parents, but we use the Shepherd's Home all the time.
Dave, what do you think?
I like what the Shepherd's Home does, I'm in favor of increasing that for them.
Ten thousand?
I think that's reasonable.
What they asked for.
Okay. Substance abuse prevention, this is our con, the contribution that Valley County makes to the Youth Advisory Council. If you guys are not familiar with the Youth Advisory Council, I would encourage you to become familiar with the Youth Advisory Council and what they do, but they are asking for a contribution of twenty-five hundred dollars again. I have not received anything different from them about an increase or a decrease.
Very familiar with them, and they have a big project coming up this year. That's really gonna make a lot of difference too, so.
The next is the contribution that the county makes for the Veteran Services Officer. That's Major Mike Keithley, who does all the, works with all the veterans in Valley County. We pay that him basically a monthly stipend. I don't think he keeps it, for the commissioners' information, I'm pretty sure that he donates that, but we still feel obligated to pay for him for the services that he provides. I think that thirty-six hundred dollars is appropriate.
Didn't it was, it was three hundred a month and two hundred went to him and a hundred went to the.
To the American Legion, that's correct.
And I think, like you said, then he takes his two hundred.
I think he just donates it as well. So, yeah.
He's such a good guy.
So we'll leave that one at thirty-six hundred.
This five hundred dollars other expenses, I'll have to take a look at what's been expended out of there this year. If you give me a quick moment, I can let you know.
This was that trip you took to Vegas to see the strippers?
No, I remember the start.
No? That was it? I thought it was.
You must have been there, you remembered it.
No, I don't remember much of that trip.
That's not really even funny at all.
It's really not.
One of the Canyon County Commissioners, when I lived down there, very big LDS guy, went to Vegas, brought home one of the strippers, divorced his wife, or she divorced him, but he said, I just wanted to give her a different life. She was stripping in Vegas, you know, I just needed to bring her home. I don't think he ever married her, but he got booted out of office and now he's Middleton's mayor. After the last mayor got in trouble for abuse of his wife.
You better move to Utah, you can have two wives now.
Only specific parts.
So what we've used that expense for is the taxes that Valley County pays for, for the Forest Protection Act. That's the expense line that we use for that.
We have to pay taxes on the forest when they don't pay us anything.
This is, yes.
There's something wrong with that.
Those are probably for the trees down there and that piece of ground in Run Valley. If you own timber ground, you have to pay into the Forest Practices Act.
Yep, and that's private, it's county property, it's property that the county owns, that is correct. And then it's taxes that we pay on, on those for the Forest Protective Act and Forest Assessment.
Even the state pays this. In fact, the state pays a big chunk into this.
So if you'd like us to change the title of that, you can.
I think I would, so we know what it is, easier.
Okay.
I pay about three hundred and eighty bucks a year for my timber ground.
Let's get that swapped with IG and get something else with.
I think we could sell it for a lot.
All right, moving right along, we'll go to O one twenty-five, Welfare Director. This is for the contribution that Valley County makes for the YCAP program. The first expense line is for chimney sweep. We have not expended any money this year. I, I do with policy and a couple invoices that were submitted, I believe, last claim period for that. But if an individual needs their chimney swept, they go to YCAP. YCAP gets its, gets the services provided, and then the county pays that bill. So the contribution that we've made in the past is twelve hundred dollars for that program. And I would recommend that we continue to fund that program. The next expense line is grants and contributions. This is the actual contribution that Valley County makes for YCAP. Just for your guys' information, it was significantly higher in the past. The commissioners, I believe, reduced it to twenty thousand in twenty eighteen. There was some concerns about where the money was going, if it was just going for administrative costs and not costs associated with services in Valley County. And I think after some accounting was done, it was deemed appropriate by the commissioners to reduce that to twenty thousand.
And I think we need to do the same on the Homemaker program too, Doug, because that, that program is just about dead. I know we paid like three claims so far this year for Homemaker.
Yeah, we spent, so you're saying we leave it the same at five thousand? We reduced it, if you can see, we reduced it from twelve thousand five hundred to five thousand this year, based on what the commissioners were seeing in the program?
I'm sure they didn't do two thousand.
So, back to grants and contributions, so is this, is this a federal program?
It is a federal program.
So we're supplying a house, we're supplying the other programs, and yet we're giving the federal government twenty thousand?
You're giving your local YCAP office twenty thousand dollars.
But we don't know how that's expended.
Yeah, you remember she came in and they talked about the light heat where they pay people's power bills? And that was around ninety.
That's different, though. This goes into the general fund for the YCAP, which is Western Idaho.
Right, yeah.
And then, then they kick back the expense, or the money to pay for our local office. That's just our contribution, they basically have a local office.
So if we didn't provide, then the local office would potentially be closed?
That could be argued, yes.
But they bring in almost a hundred thousand back into the county in light heat funds.
They do go after grants too, that impacts those that need, absolutely.
There's rental assistance, there's power, there's phone assistance.
That doesn't go through us, so we don't really have that knowledge.
The only time it would go through us is if it was through the.
But Beth administers those.
Beth administers, that's correct.
We're spending twenty to get a hundred and twenty back. Or so. That's a building, Cherry, that needs to come down like tomorrow.
Yeah, it needs some help.
Proceeds do they have at the thrift store? I feel like I've seen that number, but I can't.
I don't recall, and usually they have their significant proceeds that they receive as from their, you know, their annual yard sale that they have, which they unfortunately did not have this year. I don't know if they're postponing that or not.
I think last year, Doug, it was twelve hundred bucks they made off the yard sale, if I remember right.
So Doug, for like the heating oil, we talked about their heating oil costs.
Yeah, look, that does come out of O one eighteen.
So.
It's not budgeted in this, it comes out of the O one eighteen fuel budget expense line that we have, the fuel for heating.
So it just is a regular overall county expense. So if we have this building that's so in need of repair, do we need to put something here? Or would that be under the budget?
It would be under buildings and grounds, yeah.
Capital improvement, that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Because we talked once about combining them and the soil conservation districts and extension in one facility. We just didn't have the money to build it.
But I think what Commissioner Mopkin is asking, since they are out of the building, if it would be appropriate to budget for those expenses out of this expense line, is that right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And if we only, if there are serious needs, like, well, that's what I'm saying. If we're only budgeting, you know, we, we did bump our buildings and grounds a little bit, but if there's serious need over there that's a safety issue, then we have to consider that in this budget.
We remember a couple weeks ago, they came in and asked for new carpet?
Yeah. Well, they didn't ask, Scott put it on the list for this year. But do we need to put a little bit more in that other budget, a hundred thousand?
Again, that's where it's gonna be important for us to have a capital improvement committee that makes these recommendations to the commissioners of what is priority, right? As you're fully aware, what we've been doing in the past is reacting to breakdowns, reacting to situations and doing just real small general maintenance. Is it time the county starts looking towards the future of significant capital improvements? Yeah, absolutely, but there's a cost associated with that. And, you know, what, what prior boards have wanted to do is just lean and mean. No disrespect, but that's kind of how things have operated. And unfortunately, we're in a situation now where a lot of buildings are dilapidating, are breaking down, and it, it's probably time for, it is time, and we are developing a capital improvement plan to move forward. Then there's discussions of how to pay for that, right?
Well, you're either gonna have to float a bond, or you're gonna start saving money now.
Well, I think we have another approach. I think the approach that we can use is utilizing the pill funding that we've saved, but I think the commissioners, in order to fully act on expending those pill fundings, is they're gonna wanna see a solid plan, right? Unfortunately, that was, I haven't had time to do that. We're moving in the direction that now, though, to have a capital improvement committee. And I think once those starts, those start coming to fruition, the commissioners will have a true understanding of identifying what the needs are and where to expend that money.
Well, if you come up in your capital improvement plan for a facility to handle all three, and it's a three-year, five-thousand square foot building, then you can estimate the costs and figure out about what it's gonna cost. And if it's gonna cost you a million dollars, then you gotta start saving money, putting stuff aside or float a bond, or. It's a, it's a big ask, but.
So for this year, though, if their carpet, Scott was saying that it really needs replaced this year. So the capital improvement plan's not going to be in place in time to get it done?
Spend those maintenance costs out of this year's budget, absolutely. I think we still have, we've expended approximately thirty-three thousand. There's probably thirty thousand left in that fund for this year that could be utilized to make those improvements.
That will be there and through, and that will carry us through September.
Correct.
But will that allow us, will we go over that line item this year, do you think? We don't need to plan anything.
Yeah, as long as we don't have any catastrophes, right?
Oh, actually, we'll be way over that by the time they get down with the north end.
Well, it depends where you're gonna expend that, you can, again, there's, we could utilize the court facilities fund.
Got it.
So that.
I'm just questioning if that hundred thousand is enough, you know, for this next year.
I mean, if you want me to be honest, no, it's not, for all the things that are, you know, on the table. As you can see, we've been budgeting sixty-five thousand just for general maintenance and major issues that go wrong. That's all that we've been able to do. If the commissioners do in fact want to start making dramatic improvements, there's gonna have. Pardon me?
We won't do that until we have a capital improvement plan. I just want, if there's critical need, I just want to make sure that we're doing it either, you know, currently in this year's budget, or putting something in for this next year, until we have that, that capital improvement plan in place, so.
And I think that's a great way to go, and I'm behind you a hundred percent. Even if we have to go to the borders and ask for a million or a million and a half or two to update our facilities, I, I won't have, don't have an issue with that. Although now is not a good time to do that, because everybody's been laid off and, and, you know, we want to ask the road department for levy, and I mean, there's a lot of things that are ahead of it.
Well, again, we have been preparing for a significant improvement of the county buildings. The commissioners have in fact done a remarkable job of saving our pill dollars that we've received. So we have the ability to not have to go to the taxpayer. If once a capital improvement. If once a capital improvement committee is developed, once a presentation is made of identifying any priorities, I, I think there is a funding source for that.
Doug, did I ever tell you how they built the South End?
I think there's been some discussion.
There was discussion about, they saved their cash carry forward and extra funds and they started saving them, but when I talked to Terry Gessner, he said, no, that, we didn't do it that way. What happened was Boise Cascade came in and logged big time one year and had to pay that tax. And it was over a million dollars and they used that extra fund to build that South End. So, you know, sometimes things can bust loose for you and we'll have stuff, have extra money.
So this year, out of that thirty thousand, we're still gonna have that glass door in the front foyer?
Capital improve, the court facilities fund is what I'd recommend to pay for that.
Surfacing that west parking lot. I'm just looking at Scott's major situation. You know, what, what has to be repaired right now.
And you know, we just resurfaced that one across the street.
It's been a few years ago.
Five years ago?
It's been a few years ago.
And this one here, they did it too and it fell apart right away.
So regarding the, I mean, yeah, I think it might be beneficial. I don't know for buildings and grounds to give you maybe the top ten that they think are priority presented to you.
So they kind of did in this maintenance project.
I just didn't know if they broke it out for like top ten or.
They do. They, they put, it's all color-coded. What did they call it? Emergency repairs, basically.
I do recall that in red.
So, yeah. So, I mean, some of these are ones that are gonna cost some between now and the end of the year, which will probably eat up the rest of the budget. And then in the next year, you know, I, I think that we just need to make sure that there's enough in that next year to cover these emergency repairs. I don't know. I think we may have to revisit, but I'll spend some time on this and ask him to get a budget.
That would be great. And we can take some time on it as well and make sure that we are budgeting accordingly, accordingly, based on the projects that have been submitted to you.
I think I sent this to you, Dave.
I just was looking for it. I don't have it, sir.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, maybe give me a second.
Yeah, that's where I found out the seniors air conditioner falling off the wall and there were some other things that just got to get on pretty quick.
And I apologize, we kind of got off track. The Homemaker Program.
I would, my feeling is twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
And let's just see what their reaction is because they haven't even come close to that.
They have not. The only year that they was twenty eighteen, in which they expended about five thousand dollars.
I think you're having a really hard time finding people to do that work.
Yep. Can't find the workers and they pay such low wages, nobody else to do it.
The next one is oh three. That's a separate budget for the contributions that Valley County pays to the local airports. There's McCall Airport, Donley Airport. Surprisingly enough, they do in fact have an airport and then Cascade Airport. Every year, the commissioners have budgeted twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Which one are you on?
You just get the head of ways, that's okay, it's in there.
Sorry, I, I think I mixed them up when you made the pop.
I'm trying to remember. I stopped and talked to both the airports here a couple of years ago and the reason why that's there is so that they can land emergency.
In, in Donley?
Oh, I didn't stop at Donley. That's a dirt airport. That's a dirt track. Ray told me it was so that they can land emergency equipment here, federal if they need to. It was like not for fires, it was for, if they need to get a bunch of stuff flown in and landed, that's why we have to contribute. And I'm going, what does that have to do with the county?
This is a separate levy. It's not associated with the oh one, the general fund. It's a separate levy that the county can levy for, for airport funding. And the county has made the decision in several years. I can't tell you how far this goes back to levying for airport and then make that payment to the local airports.
We get it all back in the valuation of the hangers that we get taxes off of?
I, I think it's very justified about the, I guess, the cost comparison.
So they're not asking for any more?
Well, I have not reached out to them. I would assume if we do reach out to them, of course, they're going to be requesting more. We levy twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and then each airport gets a portion of that. And I apologize, I don't have that in front of me, what the breakdown is. I do think McCall gets the majority. And then going down from Cascade gets the second most and then Donley. Next time I will provide you with the exact contributions that are made.
I don't think we can give more than what we're actually levying.
I think.
You can't. No, 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 absolutely not. The amount that you levy is the amount that would be paid out. Yes, ma'am.
Cascade gets ten, McCall gets fifteen and Donley gets twenty.
I'll have to look. Yeah, I don't know.
Twenty-two fifty or something like that.
What the exact breakout is.
So we'll keep that the same until you hear.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So just so you guys might know, I need to leave here within five.
Okay. Well, do you have, will we do one more? Well, this one might take a little bit longer because I think there's still some discussions of how this budget will operate. This is the Valley County Fairgrounds. In prior years, Valley County just makes the contribution to the Fair Board. And the Fair Board makes the expenses as they deemed appropriate. There's been some conversations that those expenditures, those invoices would be submitted to Valley County and then Valley County would handle the, the payment of those. So I don't know where we're at. So this one might take a little bit longer for a decision to be made.
There's a Fair Board meeting this week. We'll take this, have this conversation with them so that we have clarity all the way around on what's happening.
Okay, so we will postpone the discussion of the fairgrounds. The next one is Health District and we did receive a presentation from Central District Health Director, Russell Duke. He indicated that our ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars is actually going to be going down, not significantly. But we will budget for what the requested amount was.
It's like ninety-two eighty.
Yeah, I apologize.
Ninety-two something.
Don't have it in front of me.
Is this gonna change at all with the way that they're restructuring funding with Medicare or anything else?
No, but what's happening right now is that there's a group that wants to go to the legislature and say, we want to self-fund. The counties want to pay for all of it. Because the legislature has too much control over salaries and raises and the state, I should say, and all that stuff. So there's a big discussion right now. However, I think we can use indigent funds if, if we, if we get a bump in this. So you can levy for it.
I, getting to the indigent budget, based on the Medicaid expansion, it's possible that we'll be able to reduce our indigent budgets. But we definitely need some, some clarity of how that looks and what the expectations of the counties are. And I, unfortunately, I still don't think there's clear guidelines of what those are.
So we can just leave this one at whatever they sent, ninety-two.
Correct. This is, the Health District budget is.
So when down?
Is going to remain the same. We have two more and I really think we can get through them based on what was put on the agenda today. The next one is junior college tuition. This is the money that Valley County pays out for individuals attending junior colleges up to three thousand dollars lifetime. This money is, these expenditures are paid for utilizing liquor dollars that come in, the liquor tax. So twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars comes in each year and then we attempt to expend all of that out paying for individuals' junior college tuitions. So this is basically in and out.
And it's not the liquor that we consume. It's a statewide formula, isn't it?
This is the.
That's the liquor I consume. What are you talking about?
Yes, I mean, the dollars.
It's like the gas tax. It's not figured on the local, how much liquor you drink. It's all a state fund.
Correct. There's a state formula to determine how much each county gets if in fact, like Ada County, they tax for their, their junior college. We use liquor dollars to pay for those expenses.
And I'm gonna have McKenzie work on a marketing campaign once we get through all this other stuff.
Twenty-nine-five for that one.
Yes, sir. Drink more, support college kids? What's the marketing campaign gonna look like?
So I think that this is gonna be kind of a big deal because BSU is already pushing all their online platforms. California schools are not opening this fall in the college. So kids are gonna find out they can take college online. And I think that's gonna help, you know, a lot. And I think we can push this message out. BSU's lost fifty million dollars so far.
That's unfortunate.
BSU.
All right, the last one is Veterans Memorial. Again, the Valley County per code has the ability to levies separately for Veterans Memorial costs. There, we have in fact done this year after year in the amount of eighty-five hundred dollars. And then that goes to the American Legion in Cascade. And they distribute that for the cost of maintaining any type of memorials and things of that nature.
Doug, didn't we help pay for that memorial in McCall City that that one guy built?
I think Cascade did.
Did they through this?
Correct.
I know we put something towards it. We'll leave that at eighty-five.
I would recommend eighty-five hundred again. And this is separate than the, the veterans payment that we make to Major Mike Keithley for overseeing the work with the veterans. And with that, commissioners, that could be the sort of budget workshop.
We have tort left.
I didn't put tort on here. So we'll discuss tort at a later date.
Okay. So at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Where are you then? We'll save these for next week.
Thank you for being tolerant of all my questions.
No, no problem.